This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
All right, with that, I will call the order of this meeting into East Hampton Plan and Order Tuesday, August 5th, 2025. We are on person and we are recording. First item on the agenda is public speak. Is there anyone in the room or online who would like to speak to anything not on the agenda? Good evening. Welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Kathy Wazinski. I'm on Overlook Drive. I wanted to just raise the concern for anybody that might be watching from the public that there are a number of proposed zoning changes that the Affordable and Fair Housing Commission are proposing that are very problematic and detrimental to our community. Some of them actually pose a risk to our water source by doubling the density in the aquifer protection area, including both the recharge and the secondary recharge area. So at some point, my belief is that it'll come before this board, and I wanted to start raising the concern about those particularly, but also some of the others. For instance, removing the concept of family for those zoning regulations, changing the allowable stories in the business district to allow for multiple stories. I think there was some discussion of three to five story buildings in our downtown corridor. I think that makes it too crowded and changes the overall feel of our community. And to that point, one of the things they're talking about removing is character of the community. What I was told at the Affordable and Fair Housing Commission was the concept of character of the community is racist and is used to maintain whiteness. I do not believe that's true. And I think it's very derogatory to anybody that might be concerned about urbanizing our small semi-rural city. So I wanted to bring those concepts up so you could start thinking about them and hopefully look at the proposals before it comes before you. Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments for anything that is not on the agenda tonight? Right, moving on along, our public hearing for the evening is to do public hearing for a particular area for a property located in the business zone district of 35 Pleasant Street. Is there somebody else? Jeff is online. Hi Jeff, good evening.
I am here, yeah. Sorry, I couldn't be there. I'm juggling a couple of different meetings tonight, so trying to do the best I can, shorthanded here.
Understood. The ConCom is still undertaking a review. So maybe we have some things to update, but other things we probably need to put off for the remainder of the year.
Right, yeah, so we were still working with Conservation Commission on a couple of things. Slope stabilization being the most significant one. I think all of their other questions have primarily been answered with regards to lighting and phasing, some additional planting that we shared with you at the last meeting. There was some information that we provided them relative to repair of that existing outfall and repair of that gully behind the existing garage. But yeah, we have another meeting with them scheduled next week to go over any of the latest information.
Okay, so why don't you, I guess, update us on any of the changes? I know there's some new submissions this week for the meeting and let us know what you've been working on since we last spoke.
Sure. So, let's see, anyway, yes, okay. So yeah, just real quickly, I think the most significant changes to the site, again, just sort of introduction to the site, existing site, is relative to, let's see, this planting plan, I think we had shared last time. This was an update with some slope stabilizing seed material and other woody plants along the top of the bank, some signage expressing, you know, just caution about that steep slope. I think that was shared with you last time. We did have a slight update with the grading plan in that there was slightly higher groundwater in this portion of the site. And so the way to resolve that and get above the groundwater separation issue was to simply install a subdrain in that pore system. So the calculations that have been submitted, you know, there is some amount of pre-existing flow that comes off the site into Pleasant Street. So this merely mimics, or actually reduces that current flow, but is a way to alleviate some of the concerns with, you know, this corner of the site. Everything else drainage-wise has remained largely the same. I think some of these infiltration trenches associated with the roof drainage have been adjusted around slightly in their locations, but largely are all in the same general vicinity. Did provide a snow storage plan. You know, there's a number of places that, you know, we can store snow, obviously, as with any other, you know, any location that's got some density to it. If the snowfall amounts are large enough, they simply need to truck it offsite and remove it. So that's just part of the protocol and what they'd need to do. But there is some space on the site to store, you know, a fair amount of snow, depending on the snowfall event. This was just following up on some of the lighting information that was agreed upon with Conservation. They were primarily concerned about lights in the back of the buildings as they face the Manhattan River and the wildlife habitat areas. So those lights in particular are slightly different style. They certainly could be at the backs of all of the units, but we were just addressing their concerns, particularly as they faced that slope. The only other lights on the site are, were, you know, these sconces, which were, you know, part of the original submission package. Those are just at the, you know, entryways at the front of the buildings, but there's no other site lights proposed. So that was at least the agreement that we had with the Conservation Commission for those particular lights. We had provided, I understand that there was a request for an HOA, a draft HOA, and I think we just mentioned that, you know, we're just not that far along in the process to have all of that legal work done. We certainly anticipate that it would include maintenance of the porous asphalt and any of the roof drains and gutters and infiltration beds. So I think the same porous information or maintenance information was previously provided, but we did update this maintenance plan, operation maintenance plan, to include the infiltration beds and the roof drains and gutters to make sure they're cleaned. But we've got, you know, we've got a couple of companies that they can reach out to for contracting and would fully anticipate that, you know, this O and M plan would become part of the overall HOA for the development. So that's that update. And then I think the last most significant one is probably just some more information about slope stabilization and repairs. And so there were, there is some matting that we're proposing in some areas. If I just go back to the site real quick. So there are some locations here where this slope stabilization material is essentially inserted into that soil profile, so it's not, you know, it's not on the surface. It gets embedded in amongst that layer, the soil layer, to help retain its integrity and reduce erosion concerns. So that's what these details are here. And then this was just a detail describing sort of the limits of that slope repair where that outfall is. And in discussions with the Conservation Commission, just trying to understand exactly what they were looking for and, you know, talking through the feasibility of construction and how that would all, you know, theoretically come to fruition. And there's, you know, obviously limited access to that slope, that garage. The existing garage backs right up to the top of that slope. There's really no way to drive a vehicle or construction equipment in and around the sides, you know, once you're on that slope. So it seemed reasonable that the, you know, the most reached we would get would be from an excavator parked on that existing slab. They've got about a 30-foot, you know, arm reach. You turn that bucket around to be able to, you know, compact this material. We've noted it to be compacted in lifts. Also includes some of the slope stabilization material, but are proposing, you know, a more definitive area. From a, you know, plan and elevation standpoint, what those extents would be for that restoration? Because it's just, we can't, you know, we have, we'll have very little control over loose filled soils for the down slope where it can't be compacted or controlled. So this was an effort to describe that in a little bit more detail. I think this was the phasing plan that we shared with you last time. That hasn't changed at all. And the building elevation. So those were really the major updates. The slope stabilization and repair, the O and M plan, lighting and snow storage, I think were the major updates to the package that you've got.
And Jeff, what are you back with ConCom?
That is next week. I think it's next, what, next Wednesday, maybe?
Monday.
Monday, I'm sorry, yes, Monday.
Okay, any questions from planning board members? Do you have any new stuff or anything that we asked last time that we didn't hear back?
I think the first one.
All right, I have a question on the phasing plan. On the phasing plan, you have some marked red line, red dash lines that show saw cut existing pavement. Why, can you explain a little bit more about that? That was, I guess, a surprise to me. That implies that you're keeping some pavement, but I thought you were using new porous pavement.
We are, yeah. The goal is that we would, let's see if I can bring up that plan. The idea is that during construction, there is a fair amount of that existing pavement that would serve as a construction entrance. So for example, this, you know, existing driveway here can be used for the construction of all these units and probably the church. While, you know, while construction is going on, they'll use that entrance. It's far more stable, much cleaner than doing a, you know, a stone tracking pad. Existing asphalt is going to be a much easier surface to clean and keep clean. And so the recommendation would be to utilize those entrances in this one and this, you know, location as well during the construction process. So these red lines here, you know, the idea is that they would saw cut and remove all of the asphalt where, you know, units one through 11 are. Build those out and then as they're, you know, installing the driveways and need to do the final site work, they would remove, you know, what remaining pavement there is and install the porous asphalt, because that would be the last part of construction. And then similarly on this side, you know, there's, there is space to construct these, leave the existing driveway in place for access, but it seemed crazy to pull all that out to install a less integral construction entrance.
Okay, that makes sense. The only other thing I had concern, I guess, I had is the snow removal. Having snow piles right at the very edge where the street is, it's really going to affect site lines. So I mean, I think that should be rethought, reconsidered, but I understand the point is that you're going to have to remove whatever snow that needs to be removed for safety within the complex. I mean, your residents are going to want to be able to see outside when they try to exit. But that seems like a lot of snow piles in a lot of places that people need to see around them. So that's my only comment on that. The actually, the last comment I'll make is that their slope stabilization is, I've used that in the past and it does work. We do that on slopes, steep slopes where we have to work, we have to excavate. The stakes that, essentially, they're just giant staples that go deep into the ground. They keep everything where it needs to be. So that's, I was happy to see that slope stabilization plan, because I've used that too.
Well, I completely agree with the snow removal issue, particularly at the entrances to the street. I think those are the most important, because as everyone turns out, we have to make sure they won't block. I kind of recommend that you remove those, you know, the others, while they may block coming out of a driveway, aren't those critical? The remaining concerns I have are largely about conditions and a lack of HOA. I think we'll probably end up with a lack of HOA for a long time. And therefore, it's imperative that we get some conditions in. But because we're going to have to postpone anyway, I don't think it's the right time to go through those. So I recommend I just shut my mouth.
Yeah, I mean, it's safe for that, yeah. And we've done that before. I think we've talked about it here. I mean, I don't think there's any problem with saying these are the conditions included in the conditions are conditions for what must be in an HOA agreement and an O and M plan. And that, you know, any HOA agreement has to be, I think we've done it in the past, we've had town council approve it. So that needs some requirements. But so I don't think we need to get any of that signed up by any stretch before we have a vote. But I do think, yeah, maybe before our next meeting, we can all have backdoor notes and Dylan as well, try to figure out conditions that we've all talked about, because I know we've had several. And then of course, all confusion on the fact that ConCom doesn't alter anything dramatically or do anything else in there. But I think that probably makes sense at this point. Any other comments or questions from board members? Over to the public.
Kathy Wazinski, Overlook Drive. So I think the first question I still have is the stability of that slope and whether it is stable enough to have the buildings that close to the slope. The majority of the discussion at the Conservation Commission when I've been here about the slope stabilization has really been about the restoration area and preventing any erosion with the plans and not really addressing the question about, is that slope stable enough for that building to be that close to it? And they've, I think, in my sense of listening to them, they're really deferring to you all about that question. Is it geologically stable enough to have buildings that close to that slope? I would hate to be that homeowner on that building, that unit, and have it 10 years down the road, because it's not strong enough, to have it start falling, you know, your back porch start dipping down. And so I still have that question about, is it geologically stable enough to hold a building that close? We know that the garage, which is right up against that slope, has some, you know, that area that over there is is falling down. So the question is, another building that close to the slope will start causing some damage? And is the geology over there sufficient to handle a building on it? And I don't think that ConCom was looking at addressing that issue. They were really looking at the restoration area with the outfall and not the rest of it. They had the same questions, but I didn't get the sense that we're seeing it as part of their purview. So I would ask that somebody address it. And I'll go back to the ConCom about the stormwater plan. There still isn't any clarity about that porous asphalt, I do not believe. From what I've seen, it being a sole source, appropriate management of stormwater with just the porous asphalt. Any other plans that I've seen have had redundant systems. This one doesn't. And in Massachusetts, stormwater plans with porous asphalt are only rated for small storms. I'll go back to ConCom with that, but I do not believe that that is sufficient to address the needs. And I've not seen a sewer plan yet for this project, unless I'm missing it. Is it in the paperwork?
Yeah, I don't have the moment we've reviewed.
Okay, I'll go back and look at it before the next meeting then. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff, I think we talked about this a little bit. Can you speak to sort of the structural aspect of that slope? And kind of what analysis you folks have done for the, I mean, it's two distinct themes, right? One is whether we need a conservation area and the other is building quality?
Right, yeah, so, yeah, conservation's a major concern. It's obviously the stability and particularly as it relates to, you know, the infiltration. And so we're, you know, we're currently engaged with a structural engineer for the building, for the building architecture, as well as a geotech to provide them, Conservation, with some sort of report. So we're just trying to work out the details of, you know, what that entails and what it says. And we hope to share that with them, you know, for the meeting next week.
Will that be broader or will it include sort of the scope we're talking about here tonight? The sort of larger context of, we'll just go back in. Okay, can you make sure you submit that to us as well when you do the ConCom?
Absolutely.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Can I, the sewer plan is on sheet LC 500, if you want to look at it. And that, but thank you for that, because one thing I wanted to know, and this is such a small thing, it is not at all a big issue, but on that sheet, LC 500, on your water system, you've got a hydrant that's sitting in the middle of your parking area instead of off the parking area. And so I'd like to see where that hydrant should be placed, where you actually are proposing to place it, because right now, your only hydrant that I see is in the parking lot. The other, I guess, the other question I have is, why in front of unit 19 on your water system? Why do you just have it capped? Why don't you have a blow off there to clean it out?
There should be a hydrant right in that vicinity.
There is no hydrant shown on your water system. You just have a capped end of your water main? Oh, I see it. Yep, it's next to unit 21. All right, so the hydrant that I'm speaking of is actually behind the, behind the town, the nine units in the church.
Okay, yeah, I'll, yeah, we'll certainly double check that.
Thank you.
But the intent, yeah, certainly the intention is to have, you know, multiple hydrants on the site.
Okay.
Any other comments from the public?
Robert Harper from 22 Pleasant Street, as you all very well know about this. I'm curious if, thank you, am I able to project anything that I should do my part?
Dylan?
That's your discretion.
I don't have a problem with if he wants to put something up to the screen.
Yeah, easiest way is probably just going to have you connect to the Google Meet and then you can check if I can help you with that.
Yeah.
Go to East Hampton, madeup.gov/plan.
All right, to conduct business, I suppose.
Same school, all one word, all over.
Let's wait for it.
There, just go ahead and wait, because I thank you contributor, and then you can go ahead and say.
Thank you, Dylan.
All right, we should get our bus.
Can I not see that?
Yeah.
All right. It's funny that fire hazards just came up, because depicted is a fire hydrant, but you may not be able to see it. Really briefly, I just want to say thank you, guys. Thank you to the planning board for hosting this process and looking into our shared concerns. And also to my city councillor for helping to represent the neighborhood and community. I also want to thank the developer for investing in our city, again, for creating housing and for preserving the historic church. I have attended nearly every meeting in this project because it directly affects my neighborhood. That's welcomed me. Many of my neighbors rent and don't receive notice about the development or work hours that make it hard to attend meetings like this. So I've tried to do my homework. I'm not here because I want to be a squeaky wheel, though I admit I have been. I'm here talking about headlight glare, because those lights will shine directly into the bedroom of my elderly downstairs tenant. And I'm raising concerns about traffic flow, because the same tenant has told me how unsafe she feels trying to pull out on Pleasant Street. So while I've engaged deeply, I've been deeply disheartened that months into this process, there's still been no effort for the developer to meet with us neighbors. No emails, no knocks on the door, only notices required by the town. As of a few weeks ago, as depicted, they're not even bothering to maintain the property to clear the fire hydrant that I would personally rely on in case of an emergency. So my ask tonight is simple. Can the developers please propose a time to meet with us, their neighbors? I think direct communication could go a long way towards building trust and improving the outcome for everyone. I understand there are a lot of business concerns for a developer and many, many, many moving parts, especially in this development. But as the owner of the property, you're my neighbor, and I'm hoping that we get an opportunity to talk. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. And so I think we've talked about this before. I mean, we can't really compel anybody to do that. We can only encourage them. I know Jeff has heard that from us and knows that from his own experience. So I would just reiterate that, Jeff. I think it goes a long way, as we know, but just for the record, to not only make this process go smoother, but also, you know, the potential decades in the future when all these people will be living next to each other. So I would echo that. And obviously, whatever needs to be done about the fire hydrant, I assume people will do that. That's sort of separate, but I still appreciate you putting that out. Yeah, thank you. Okay, any other public comments? Anyone else online, Dylan?
We do have one person online. We have a Nicole. Nicole, if you'd like to speak, you can go ahead and use the raise hand function, and I can allow you to do so.
No pressure, we didn't make a pitch on the spot.
Not yet.
Any other comments or questions from board members, Harry?
Yeah, physically, how close are that garage to that slope?
The existing garage?
Yeah, I know, but the proposed garage are going to be building up there for those condos. How close is that last garage? And the back of the garage to the slope, how in feet, how much is that going to be?
I mean, the closest one is probably six or eight feet.
Six feet from the edge?
Yes, probably somewhere in that ballpark, yeah. I haven't, I don't have an exact measurement, but it's somewhere, something like that.
Where would I put the condo?
So the garage is, the garage that's there right now is coming down, and there'll be condos, buildings built back there. So I think the six or eight feet is from the furthest rear of the condo building to the top of the slope.
The one that's closest to the slope, right?
Yeah.
Six feet?
Right. And the existing, the existing garage, as for reference, sits, you know, literally right at the top of that embankment.
Yes, like when we did the site visit, we couldn't go behind the garage. We were going to come around it and go to the front. But then we saw where those stakes were from the rear of that.
That's pretty close, you know?
Yeah, it is. I mean, I think, you know, we've talked about this from the beginning about this, and we've had some other projects too. There's obviously an incentive for a developer not to build a building that's going to fall in, but there's also a longer timeline where the developer may be gone. There's also a lot of professionals involved in this project who have their own licenses and reputation online that don't get to skate on that if something happens. So that's why, as we talked about with the traffic report as well, you know, the idea of getting an engineer who's going to give some sort of opinion to ConCom to us about that, the structural integrity of that, I think will be.
Yeah, what's underneath there? Right, what else, how is it going to be in that close, that close to the edge? Is it dirt underneath there? Are there any kind of, what is of any kind, or what's happened?
I mean, these are all slab on grades, so there's no basements. And yeah, I mean, at least the material that is on site is a pretty good draining granular material. It's pretty sandy down to, you know, six, seven feet. And so that's, that's one of the reasons why we're proposing, you know, infiltration as a major, you know, stormwater management element is because we've got that, you know, it's a big, it really is a big sandbox. So trying to, trying to utilize those soils to the best we can.
Thank you. That's, to me, that's awfully close.
I mean, that's not my area of expertise, so at some point, we're deferring to experts, but we're going to have to wait and see what their experts say.
Yeah, but we can bring in a city engineer or something, something like that.
For any comments?
Project or provider comments on that, that was a lot of concerns. Any other comments or questions?
I don't know that you all know the answer to this, but just your feel. Do you think the ConCom is getting close to giving you a decision, or do you expect multiple more meetings? Your expectations.
I think if we can get this report to them in time from a geotech, just analyzing this, that it would likely go through, but I don't, you know, that's my gut. I think a lot of the other questions have been answered, lighting and, you know, planting and a lot of the other comments have been addressed.
Thank you, and I know that's probably something.
Any other comments or questions from board members? Dylan, anything from the planning department?
Still going through ConCom. I think right now with this project, I'm planning on attending the next ConCom meeting. And I think once ConCom wraps up, Ava Gerstal, our Conservation Agent, is going to try to attend here to kind of give you folks a summary of what happened. So.
Okay, that's really helpful. Any other comments from the public today? Jeff, I'm I'm inclined to put this out a month instead of just the two weeks, just because I think we'll want to, not only do we want Concom to. Soon they can file a quote, but whatever they're going to have to do in response to that, I think it'd be helpful for us to have it, and I don't know that there is. A lot of heavy lifting that for us, there isn't going to flow from whatever unattended comes from Concom. Unless you have a strong objection, that would be my second impulse.
Yeah.
Is that okay with you, Jeff? I mean, I know.
That makes sense, yeah. That's, I mean, obviously, we'd like to get through as quickly as possible, but I I understand, you know, the the. Concerns and and issues at play, so yeah, I don't have any objections.
Okay, so unless there's no other comments. It's September second.
Motion to continue the special for. For Tim Perrier, thirty three units.
Second it. Right, we're going to continue to September second. All those in favour?
Right.
All those standing, all right, we will see you all back here on September second.
Great.
Thank you for watching, everyone. All right. That concludes our meeting, unless there's any more space left. All right. Second it. All those in favour?
Aye.